Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the special meeting of the City Council to order on this Tuesday, December 11th. Madam City Clerk, may I have a road call, please?
Councilman Gupta.
Present.
Councilwoman Garberino.
Here.
Councilman Adiego.
Here.
Mayor Protem Matsumoto.
Present.
Mayor Normandy.
Present.
At this time, I would like to invite the South San Francisco Police Explorers to now post the colors.
Coguard, hop! Right face! Prepare to post colors. Post colors. Coguard, reform!
Thank you to our explorers. At this time, I'd like to invite and introduce Ms. Maddie Popelak to join us to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maddie, and I'd now like to have Saint Augustine's Children's Choir to sing the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? For the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I'd like to take this time to recognize a few people in the audience. If you would hold your applause for them till the very end. Consul General of Japan, Tokum... Help me, Carol. Oh, he's not here. Why do you say the name?
You're asking me.
She's gonna help me.
Counselor General of Japan in San Francisco, Tomochika Uyama, and he's en route.
I take it? No. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you. I also have Vanessa Bago Lona from the Philippine consulate in San Francisco. Are you here? Please stand up. Thank you. Mr. Jed Martin Lola from the Philippine consulate in San Francisco as well. Thank you for joining us. Assemblymember and former San Francisco Mayor Kevin Mullen.
En route.
Thank you. Former Assemblyman and South San Francisco Mayor Jean Mullen in the front. San Mateo County Supervisor and President Dave Pine. San Mateo County Supervisor David Canepa. Sarah Alpican, a representative from Congresswoman Spears' office. Thank you, Sarah. I have Jeff Sparks, a representative from Senator Scott Wiener's office. Alex Walker, representative from Assemblyman Ting's office. Thank you, Alex. This is very exciting for me to announce former South San Francisco Mayor Roberta Cherry Teglia. Welcome. Former South San Francisco Mayor Pedro Gonzalez. Former South San Francisco Mayor John Penna. I know you're here. Thank you, John. Vice Mayor of the City of Colma, John Goodwin. Thank you. South San Francisco School Board Vice President John Baker. Thank you, John. Virginia Chain Corrali, President of the San Mateo County Harbor District. I have our newly City Councilwoman Pamela Di Giovanni with the City of Daly City. I also have with us South San Francisco former Mayor Emmanuel Damonte, who's also with us. Thank you. I have Glenn Sylvester, Vice Mayor of the City of Daly City. Thank you, Glenn. Dana Luhon, President of the South San Francisco Unified School Board, is with us. And I have Robert Bernardo, San Mateo County Harbor District Vice President. Thank you. If I've missed anyone, we will make sure we add you on the next part. At this time, do we have any public comment cards? Seeing as there are none, the purpose of this meeting is to reorganize the South San Francisco City Council. I will now ask the City Clerk to read the agenda.
Resolution canvassing returns and declaring results of the 2018 statewide general election of November 6, 2018. And I will proceed to read the resolution. Resolution canvassing returns and declaring results of the consolidated general municipal election of November 6, 2018. Whereas the municipal election was held on November 6, 2018 pursuant to Resolution Number 90, 2018, Resolution Number 85, 2018, and Resolution Number 86, 2018, for the election of three members of the City Council, a City Clerk, and a City Treasurer, and to consider Measure FF and Measure LL. And whereas the City Clerk presented to the City Council for its inspections, all returns of the votes cast pursuant to California Election Code, Section 10264, now there, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of South San Francisco that it finds that there were 32,327 registered voters in the City of South San Francisco and that 21,237 total ballots were cast in the City of South San Francisco, and that the names of persons voted for as submitted at said general municipal election are as follows: As regularly nominated candidates, Mark Adiego, Councilmember; Stephen Ponce Ramirez, Councilmember; Mark Nigales, Councilmember; Flor Nicholas, Councilmember; Kamala Silva, Councilmember; Pradeep Gupta, Councilmember; Rosa Goveya Acosta, City Clerk; Caitlin Bortoli, City Clerk; Frank Riso, City Treasurer. As write-in candidates, none. Election results: That the record of the votes cast at said consolidated election in favor of said candidates, as shown by the official count at each of the several precincts established throughout the City of South San Francisco by the City Council for the purpose of conducting the consolidated election, is, as shown in Exhibit 1, the same being a tabulation of the votes by precincts. That the total votes cast at said consolidated election in favor of Measure FF, Measure LL, and said candidates for the offices of City Councilmember, as shown by the official count and included in the total set forth in Exhibit 1, are as follows: Measure FF, votes in favor of Measure FF, 14,763; votes against Measure FF, 5,018; Measure LL, votes in favor of Measure LL, 14,767; votes against Measure LL, 4,806; City Council, Mark Adiego, 9,443; Mark Nigales, 8,342; Flor Nicholas, 8,043; Pradeep Gupta, 7,838; Kamala Silva, 7,371; Stephen Ponce Ramirez, 3,302; City Clerk Rosa Goveya Acosta, 13,217; Caitlin Bortoli, 3,997; City Treasurer Frank Riso, 15,750. That the City Council of South San Francisco hereby declares as follows: Mark Adiego, Mark Nigales, and Flor Nicholas were duly elected at said election as members of the City Council of South San Francisco; Rosa Goveya Acosta was duly elected at said election as City Clerk of South San Francisco; Frank Riso was duly elected at said election as City Treasurer of South San Francisco. Measure FF and Measure LL were duly approved by the voters at said election. The City Clerk of South San Francisco shall and is hereby ordered to issue certificates of election to Mark Adiego, Mark Nigales, and Flor Nicholas as members of the City Council. The City Clerk of South San Francisco shall and is hereby ordered to issue a certificate of election to Rosa Goveya Acosta as City Clerk. The City Clerk of South San Francisco shall and is hereby ordered to issue a certificate of election to Frank Riso as City Treasurer. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon adoption.
Looking for a motion?
No, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the results of the election.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Garberino, second by Matsumoto. Do you need a road call?
Mayor Normandy.
Aye.
Councilman Adiego.
Aye.
Councilman Gupta.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Matsumoto.
Aye.
Councilman Garberino.
Aye.
Oaths of office administered to officials elected in November 26, 2018 municipal election. I would like to invite former Councilwoman and Mayor Honorable Roberta Cherry Teglia to issue the oath of office to Councilmember Mark Adiego.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of this city's official family. When Councilmember Mark Adiego called to invite me to this evening's ceremony, he noted that due to the unprecedented number of women elected to public office this year, it was being labeled "the year of the woman." I laughed and responded, "It's about time." He went on to say that as the first woman elected to the South San Francisco City Council, he felt it appropriate that I serve as his installation officer, especially as he had had something to do with my election. Over 40 years ago, and it's hard to say that, 40 years ago, Mark supported my first bid to win a council seat, and I lost. Two years later, I ran again, and in an upset victory, I became the first woman to serve on this body. And as an aside, I went on to serve for nearly 17 years. Two years after that election, I supported Mark, his successful election, and thus began his story. I must note, Mark supported every effort I made to see women become part of our city's governance, from the Planning Commission, Park and Rec, Personnel Board, Library Board, City Clerk, City Attorney, and City Treasurer. As a result, we saw the largest number of women in our city's history up to that time assume leadership roles in our local government. I have always believed that women offer a unique perspective relative to public service, and I look forward to the thoughtful, no-nonsense governance they will bring to this city and to our nation. I give great credit to the women who help elect other women, and even greater credit to the men who recognize their abilities, support them, and trust them with their vote. Mark was such a catalyst. So it is with this recognition that I congratulate all the newly elected and re-elected councilmen and councilwomen who are being seated this evening, but most especially, Councilman and former Mayor Mark Adiego. Mark, please stand and join me. I'm gonna let you continue to hold them. Please repeat after me and insert your name. I...
I, Mark Adiego.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations and good luck.
And I'll take this.
And I would just like to...
And I'll pack up here.
Okay, okay. I wanted to just take a moment to... You've met the most important person in my political life, and, you know, this is the sixth time. So some of the excitement has waned for me, and I am really envious of both Mark Nigales and Flor Nicholas, this being their first time. I remember the rush that that is and enjoy this moment. But it's especially great to reflect on how it all began, because we don't do this alone. There are special people that give us the skills and the ability to put ourselves out there. And there are special times that come along where it's not always so much the candidate, but it's the time where people are looking for change, and I benefited from so very much of that. Roberta was able to get herself elected, this councilman, and followed up with a member of the school board, Rick Haffey, who joined us. So we went from being a distinct minority on the council to being the majority, so it was great times. But anyway, I need to make this quick because there are so many more people here. It's a great evening. So I wanted to start off... There is only one person in this hall besides Roberta, but my father, who has been with me along this journey. When we began, Melvin Adiego, if you can stand... One more time, Dad, stand. So it has been a long journey when I was running for office. My father was 50 years old today. He's 88 years old. And he's still with me on the campaign trail, including some door-to-door activities. So I am a shameless politician to do that to my father. But I wanted to mention, I have a very small family to begin with, and actually, my father is the only member of my family that is here. You know, over the years, I've kind of marveled that the family keeps moving away. So, you know, some move out of the Bay Area. My brother recently went to Los Banos. I have cousins that moved into Sacramento, uncles and aunts, and some went as far as Idaho. So I don't know if it's a factor of my running for office all the time, but the family has basically abandoned me. So thank you, Dad, for being here. This was a special campaign. It was a difficult campaign. I'm not going to get into any of that, but I was challenged in a different way. But I surrounded myself with more powerful women, Roberta, and I wanted to introduce my campaign manager, who up to this point had always been the campaign treasurer, but she insisted on getting a promotion. So Anna Maria Uchelli, thank you for your efforts as my campaign manager. And then a new partisan, Madeline Belai Banfield, was my campaign treasurer, if you could rise. And then my campaign event chairwoman was Ginny Jacoby Tilton, if you could stand for a moment. So I didn't know the big push for women, but I kind of had an inkling, so I surrounded myself with powerful women, because when you want to get something done, who do you ask? Anyway, I am so very pleased to be here, and it's a wonderful night. It's great to see so many people out. I'm not going to have a chance to make any remarks, so I just wanted to mention that it is such a special time in South San Francisco. You know, there's a group of people who started to come to South San Francisco and North San Mateo County in the '70s, and it has taken 40 years for them to assume their rightful place in elective office. So I am very pleased for the Filipino community, for our first Filipino councilman, Mark Nigales, and our first Filipina councilwoman, Flor Nicholas Martel.
I would like to invite former Assemblymember and former Mayor Honorable Jean Mullen to the podium to issue the oath of office to incoming Councilman Mark Nigales. Mark, please join Mr. Mullen at the podium.
Honored guests, it's a personal privilege to install Mark Nigales for his first term as a City Councilmember. Some of you may know that Mark was a student of mine at South San Francisco High School. Beyond that, after university, Mark became a field representative for Assemblywoman Fran Pavly in Southern California. Fran was my seatmate in Sacramento and talked often about how wonderful Mark was. Fran later went on to the Senate, and she's renowned as the author of AB 32, the world-defining global-warming combating legislation. Mark was interested in returning from Southern California to the Bay Area, and I was pleased to have him as my field rep, and he stayed with me for the entire time that I was in office here in San Mateo County. When I was termed out, Mark went to Congresswoman Jackie Spears' office and has been with her for the last few years as her representative in this area as well. So Mark's political career, in keeping in mind the theme tonight, has been guided by four fantastic women. Of course, I include his mother, his wife Amy, who was with him, Fran Pavly, Jackie Spear, and his high school teacher, who wasn't a woman and still isn't. So Mark has the background, the experience, the skills, and the temperament to be a terrific leader for our community. And so, again, I'm pleased to be able to do this, and Mark, if you would come over and let me administer the oath of office to you. Bring everybody. You can cut this way. You'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mark Nigales.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California...
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear...
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance...
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation...
That I take this obligation.
Freely...
Freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well...
And I will.
And faithfully...
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office...
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I was told to take in this moment, so I'm gonna take, just take in this moment. I was also told to give brief remarks, and if anyone knows me, I tend to pontificate for long periods of time, so I cut down the speech to 30 minutes. Just one second. I left the third page of my speech, so I'm looking at my phone at the same time, so... Just one second. I promise to be really, really quick. First, let me thank former Assemblymember Jean Mullen for swearing me in. Jean, I was blessed to be her student at South City High School, and then later becoming a member of your staff. You've been my high school teacher, my former boss, but more importantly, my friend. Even today, I'm still learning from my favorite teacher. Thank you so much. Now, let me recognize a few more people. Let me start off with my mom and dad, Virginia and Caesar Nigales. See if you guys can just wave. I would not be the person today if it wasn't for you, so thank you. My sister Christina and her husband Jaime, if you raised... Thank you. Thank you for coming. To my in-laws, my mother-in-law Sandy Lamb, my sister-in-law Pamzy, and my brother-in-law Fred, thank you for coming from the East Bay. I also want to thank the large group of aunts, uncles, and cousins that came. Just wave if I try to introduce you. We'll be here forever. Finally, I want to thank my family, to who I call the Boy King, Aiden. I'm sorry that I missed a lot of your soccer games, but know that this campaign was about your future. I'm so lucky to be your dad. To my baby girl Josephine, when I come home after walking precincts, just looking at you and seeing you smile and giving me that hug was the best feeling in the world. And to my wife Amy, I can't look at you because I'm gonna lose it if I do. You were my chief of staff, my senior advisor, my social media coordinator, graphic designer, treasurer for the campaign. You were basically the campaign, and I won it because of you, so thank you very much. Let's recognize her. There were some rough days on this campaign, but my wife told me that I needed to run because the city needs you, they just don't know it yet. I want to thank Krista Martinelli for her service. I want to thank you for all the questions that you answered. I want to say thank you for all your great service, and I know you're gonna do well in the next round of things that you do. I look forward to our new clerk, Rosa. I apologize now, I'm gonna call you a lot too, so I have you on speed dial. For Frank Riso, thank you. I look forward to working with you. To Councilmember Pradeep Gupta, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for our community. I know that you and Kunkum will continue to be a great part of this community, so thank you for your service. And to Mayor Lyne Normandy, thank you very much for everything. I want to say thank you for always offering to watch our kids. Even just for a few minutes, that just, it helps so much. To my new colleagues of Carol Rich, Mark and Flor, this is gonna be a wonderful team, and I can't wait to work with you. You see, this campaign wasn't about me. This campaign was about the family that I met in Southwood, who were worried about the affordability crisis, that they didn't know if they could stay in South City. This campaign was about young families, like the young family I met in Winston Manor, whose child was on the four-year waitlist for preschool. They wanted to make sure that their daughters started on the right path. This was about the baseball coaches and soccer coaches that I met in Sunshine Gardens, Parkway, and Francisco Terrace, who wanted to make sure that our kids... Parkway, and Francisco Terrace, who wanted to make sure that our kids got to play on the best fields. This campaign was to ensure that we respect our past, but look towards the future, and I promise you, our future is bright. It was about the sleeping giant known as the Filipino community that came together to make history and elect the first two Filipinos to the city council in South San Francisco. It was about the mother I met in Parkway Heights, when I knocked on the door and introduced myself. She said, "I know exactly who you are. You helped my son and get, who helped get through a difficult situation, and I've never forgotten that." That's the type of council member I want to be. That's the type of person I strive to be. You see, my friends, I believe that today is better than yesterday, and tomorrow will be better than today. And when we all work together, hand in hand, we, as South San Francisco residents, can accomplish anything. I've always believed in South San Francisco. I've always believed in you. I like to say that South San Francisco is a big family, and at the end of the day, we all come together at the dinner table. That's our shiny city on the hill, that we love and call South San Francisco, has and will continue to be the greatest city to live, work, and play. You saw how hard it worked on the campaign. I promise that I'll work twice as hard on the council, and will not let you down. I'm just a South City kid, a South City boy who wanted to do good for his community, and you're giving me that opportunity. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and let's get to work. Thank you very much.
I would like to invite Mr. Ninar Nicholas, Flor Nicholas's husband, to the podium to issue the oath of office to incoming Councilwoman Nicholas. Flor, please join your husband at the podium.
I, one of Lord Carpio Nicholas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties of which I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much. I think I owe that to my husband, who worked tirelessly during the campaign. Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, Supervisor Dave Pine, Supervisor David Canepa, my fellow council members now, former Assemblyman Jean Mullen, former Mayor Roberta Telia, distinguished guests, friends, ladies and gentlemen. When I look back and recall what my family had gone through in the last thirty-plus years that we have been residents of South San Francisco, all I feel is gratitude. We were able to overcome the challenges because of the community's support. Along the way, I met extraordinarily good people who inspired me to give back and be a part of this tightly-knit city, like the late Dick and Ginny Nosker, the late Joe Frenakis, the former mayor Pete Gonzalez and family. The late Alice Bulas would have been ecstatic if she was here today. It only took more than two decades that she kept on urging me to run for office, but I never did, and now there is just not one, but two Filipinos, Filipino-Americans in the city council. First and foremost, I would like to thank my mentor, Mayor Pro Tem Carol Matsumoto, for recognizing my potential and not giving up and asking me to run, although I turned her down at least two times, I think. Thank you, Councilmember Rich Garberino, for the encouragement and backup. To my earliest and biggest supporters, Reza Torre, Susan Nunakawong and her husband Alvin, Al and Madeline Banfield, thank you from the bottom of my heart. To my Pal Boosters family, to my Mother de la Rosa and All Souls communities, which were always there for me, brothers and sisters from Francis Drake Lodge, Knights of Columbus 14818, the Young Men Institute Number 32, who helped me tremendously. I also pay tribute to the other candidates who shared the love for the city. Of course, last but not the least, I am extremely grateful to the South San Francisco voters who put their trust in me. Thank you all for this privilege, and I promise to serve you well. I also owe my family and loyal friends a lot. I would have not been able to do what I'm doing right now if it were not for your love and constant support. I do really love you. I would like to introduce my husband, who was here and was sworn in, Ninar Nicholas, My mother, Maria Carpio. Of course, the stars of our family, Iggy and Ari, who always remind me that we need to preserve our city's quality of life as we know it, and protect it for them, our future generation. My husband's nephews, John De Leon and Melvin Mendoza, and Julie De Leon are here today too, and our grand nephews, Ryan and Dylan. I also have here my first cousin, who's like a sister to me, Adele Soriano, and her husband, Thank you all. I'm ecstatic. I'm excited. I promise I'll serve, I'll try my very best to serve you well.
I would like to invite City Treasurer Frank Rizzo to the podium, and it is my honor to issue his oath of office. Frank, thank you for the honor of allowing me to do this one last time.
Thank you.
I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Frank Rizzo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
You gave a microphone to an accountant. Hope you're ready for a discussion on revenue recognition policy. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank Krista for doing me the honor of one of her last acts as city clerk, swearing me in. I just want to take a moment to thank a few special people. First, the hardest-working person I have ever met, who juggles more priorities than the most seasoned city staffer and has the toughest constituency to deal with, namely me and my daughter, and that would be the love of my life, my beautiful wife, Robin. To my biggest, yet smallest supporter, my six-year-old daughter, Olive. Olive, hopefully you learned a few important lessons here tonight. I know you're out there. I can barely hear you, but I know you're there. All the people in this room, Olive, everyone here, regardless of their background or their political beliefs, they all have one thing in common, and that's the love of South San Francisco. Always take pride, Olive, in where you live, whether you've lived there only a couple months, or you've lived there a lifetime, and try to give back to your community. Don't worry if you're not recognized for your contribution or whatever you do. What matters is that you do something to make this place a little bit better when you leave than when you came in. I'd also like to thank, and bear with me, the person who's not here tonight, my mother. As many of you know, Ma died three months ago. While she wasn't able to participate and help me in this last election, she did have the honor of being the first to sign my nomination paperwork. Mom was a type of person who would have quietly volunteered without seeking the spotlight. She was one of the countless, nameless residents of South City who gave back whenever she could, doing whatever she felt was needed to make this place a better place for all of us. She might not be here in person, but she's here in spirit through us all. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't give a special thank you to the man who has done much, not only for me, but for all of us, my deputy treasurer and our city finance director, Richard Lee. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work and learn from Richard the past four years. He is a fountain of knowledge, and I will miss his counsel as he leaves us for the city of San Mateo. But I couldn't be happier for his success. Richard, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you have done. You will be missed. Thank you.
I would like to invite Rosa Goveya Acosta's daughter, Andrea Acosta, to the podium to issue the oath of office to incoming city clerk, Goveya Acosta. Rosa, if you would please join your daughter at the podium.
Repeat after me. I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
I, Rosa Goveya Acosta.
Oh, sorry. Do you want to start over? Okay. That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, I will well and faithfully.
And I, that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
I'd like to take an opportunity to thank my councilmembers that have supported me throughout this campaign, to the many voters, my colleagues from the school board, to so many people that had offered support to me. I am humbled by and honored to serve as your city clerk. I'd like to thank more, especially my husband, Jose, I'd like my daughter, Andrea, Vanessa, Manny, and Jasmine, and my parents for supporting me and guiding me throughout this journey. I realize tonight, we have someone in the audience that is very special to me, and I want to recognize, former Public Works Director Terry White, who seventeen years ago afforded me an opportunity to work for this wonderful city. He heard many of my journeys, and he always inspired me and encouraged me to pursue my dreams. I thank you all for being here and supporting me. I do want to say my speech in Spanish, because my parents are here, and I think I want to acknowledge them. Sorry, bear with me. Hoy quiero reconocer y agradecerle a mi esposo, mis hijos, y en especial a mis padres, Avro y Guadalupe, por estar aquí conmigo esta noche y brindarme su apoyo en mi juramento como secretaria municipal de la ciudad. Muchísimas gracias por su apoyo. Buenas noches.
Now you have to go to work.
I have to go to work. Reorganization of the city council. A, nominations for mayor, close of nominations, appointment. B, nominations for vice mayor, close of nominations, appointment. C, oaths of office administered to incoming mayor and vice mayor.
And, quick, at this moment, I'd like to nominate Carol Matsumoto for the office of mayor.
Second.
Olive, roll call, right?
Yes. Councilmember Nigales.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nicholas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garberino.
Yes.
Councilman Adiego.
Yes.
Mayor Matsumoto.
Now we have the nomination for vice mayor. Do I have a motion? Or do I have a name? Do I have a motion?
Mayor Matsumoto, it is my pleasure, in following with our rotation tradition, to nominate the name of Richard Garberino. Quite often, as you know, Richard and I were very close. We're often confused for one another at this point in our lives, as my hairline retreats, so... But I have enjoyed since 2005 working with Richard and look forward to the future.
Thank you, Mark.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Matsumoto.
I.
Councilwoman Nicholas.
I.
Councilman Nigales.
I.
Councilmember Adiego.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garberino. Can I please ask the Caye Halu of the Youth Advisory Council to come up to the front to issue the oath of office for incoming mayor, Carol Matsumoto? Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carol Matsumoto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of, of the State, to the Constitution of United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge, discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
I would have had a family member, my brother, but I forgot to invite him. Honestly. Honestly, I was so busy in meetings and inviting friends and associates, I forgot to invite my own brother. He's been here before, so it's okay. What I'm going to do now is, I'd like to, Rosa, reverse, I'd like to introduce the Kai who, who gave me the oath of office. She is a native South San Francisco. She is a junior at South San Francisco High School, where she is captain of the mock trial team, and plays on both the softball and basketball teams. She spends her free time teaching children Sunday School in Oakland and volunteering for the California Scholarship Federation. She is a member of the San Mateo County Youth Commission and currently serves as a vice chair on the South San Francisco Youth Advisory Council. And then later on, I will introduce Maddie when, when I do my mayor's remark, but I just wanted to take this opportunity. That's, I'm not going to, I have closing remarks, and it's a long meeting, so that's what I'm doing. Thank you.
Can I please ask Bianca, both for the granddaughter of Rich Garberino, to come forward to issue the oath of office for incoming vice mayor, Richard Garberino?
Okay. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Richard Garberino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to, what?
About to enter.
You'd think I could follow simple, you know. Anyway, I want to first introduce some of my family. My wife, Elaine, who for the past fifty-five years has been my staunchest supporter, sometimes my severest critic, and has just been the wind beneath my wings for all these years. And I could not have done any of this without you. Thank you very much. It's so ni, yeah, please. My daughter Andrea Velforte. Andrea? Hi. And you met Bianca. The other two standing here were Gabriela and Gia, Andrea's daughters. Three of the eight grandchildren that we have, so they're here tonight. I just want to say it's so nice to see, Roberta, it's good to see you here again. Terry White, it's been a long time. Good to see you again. I want to just thank all of you for, for being here tonight to help us celebrate our installation into this office of city council. I want to say to Pradeep, thank you for your service to the city. I've enjoyed working with you. You've shown me that there is, you can stay calm under fire, and I appreciate that. Liza, thank you for showing me how to run a real fast meeting. I appreciate that as well. Did a good job with that. And I wish you both well in your future endeavors. And Li, where's she? Krista, where are you? There. Thank you, Krista, for all the help and support you've given me. I appreciated working with you, and I wish you success in whatever you do. So, I'm looking very fo, and congratulations to our newest council members here. Flor and Mark, I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to working with this group here. They're just, Carol and Mark or Adiego have been wonderful to work with over these past years, and I appreciate it very much, and the opportunity to work with them again in the coming years. So, with that, I'll say thank you, and we'll see you soon. Thank you very much.
Presentations and comments by outgoing elected officials.
I'm, I'm, I'm scheduled to, it says, I'm reading the script, and it says, I'm supposed to call up former ma, a former city clerk, Krista Martinelli. Did I miss it?
Yes, no.
That's right.
You're right.
And, and, and my, because we on this council share, and so, being comments, I'd ask councilmember Garberino to present.
Krista, Krista, this is commending city clerk Krista Joy Martinelli, December eleventh, twenty eighteen. That thing's almost as big as you are. Whereas Krista Martinelli was elected to serve as city clerk for the city of South San Francisco in November two thousand and seven. And whereas during her term as city clerk, Krista Martinelli upgraded, streamlined, and codified a wide variety of processes that have made city operations and documentation more accessible to city staff and the public. And whereas as city clerk for the city of South San Francisco, Krista Martinelli exhibited outstanding leadership to her city clerk's office team, always being responsive to queries from both internal and external customers. And whereas Krista Martinelli's attention to and assistance with early voting center services have been essential in presenting a smooth and successful experience during recent election cycles. And whereas Krista Martinelli is always ready and willing to generously support the library departments and local nonprofit organizations fundraising efforts by sharing her San Francisco Giants connection. Can I get some tickets? And whereas, in addition to serving as city clerk for the city of South San Francisco, Krista Martinelli is a member of several organizations, including the State Bar of California, City Clerks Association Legislative Committee, Municipal Management Association of Northern California, Police Athletic League, Califor, California Women's League, South San Francisco Women's Club, All Souls and St. Roberts Church, among many, many others. And whereas, Krista Martinelli completed her term as city clerk of South San Francisco in November twenty eighteen, and plans to, goes blank there, plans to enter private practice. Okay. Whereas, inspired by Noah, her hardworking autistic son, and his accomplishments in the South San Francisco Unified School District, Krista Martinelli and her colleagues at I E P Collaborative will aim to secure Bay Area special needs students' success in inclusive special education programming and attain grade level measured I E Ps for its clients. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of South San Francisco does hereby commend and extend our heartfelt gratitude to Krista Joy Martinelli on her dedication, commitment, and service to South San Francisco, and wish her the best in future endeavors, serving the Bay Area special needs community, and continuing to make a lasting difference. Krista, thank you for all you've done for the city. Thank you for what you've done for me.
Next, I'd like to call up Assemblyman Mullin, former mayor and former mayor of South
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. How exciting it is to be here on a historic night. Congratulations to Mark Nagales and Flor Nicholas on their ascension to the council, and to my former colleague, Mark Adiego, for his resounding reelection, reaffirmation of his leadership in this beautiful city. And Rosa, congratulations to you. So, gives me great pleasure to say just a couple of words about Krista Martinelli. In two thousand and seven, you left the practice of law to serve your local community. I remember how excited your grandfather, Chris Ramos, was to be out campaigning and knocking on doors, and then how incredibly proud he was and your entire family was when you were sworn in the first time as clerk. I myself was a first-time candidate in two thousand and seven, so Krista and I were sort of crisscrossing the city, and I just remember being grateful that she wasn't running against me for the city council, because we all know who that, how that would have turned out, I think. But fortunately, we took different paths. Your decision to return to practicing law and opening a nonprofit focused on advocating for special needs students will serve the community as well, but I hope that you find your way back to public office when the time is right. And as a member of the Assembly Select Committee on Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities, I look forward to partnering with you and the opportunity to work with you in this new endeavor. And as Gus Nicolopoulos might say, sempre avanti. Did I get that right? Okay. Close enough. I'm going to check with Roberta, make sure I got that right. So, on behalf of my legislative colleague Senators Hill, Senator Weiner, Assemblymember Ting, we have a resolution somewhere detailing your many accomplishments in public life. We are so very grateful for your outstanding public service.
Next, I'd like to call up Dave Pint. Oh, no. Supervisor, President of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors.
Good evening, everyone. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I have the opportunity to go to a number of city council installation ceremonies, and no one does an installation ceremony like South San Francisco. This is really a remarkable event, and really says a lot about how much people care about their city and about the civic well-being of the city. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, and of course, my colleague David Canova, who's here today, South City has the good fortune of having two supervisors representing the city. We are, I'd like to present you with this accommodation and recognize your outstanding service to the city. As an attorney, I appreciate the skills that you've brought to bear, and I'm sure you'll be very successful in your private practice. I think we're all very excited about your advocacy work on behalf of special needs kids, and I will look forward to supporting you in any way I can as you embark on that. And South City has been fortunate to have you keep the city council in order and to manage what's become actually increasingly complex job with elections and filings and documents and public record requests and on and on. So, we're very fortunate for your service. And again, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, present you with this accommodation.
Next, I'd like to call up Sarah Althicken, representing Congresswoman Jackie Speer.
Almost fell. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Obviously, the Congresswoman would have loved to be here, but unfortunately, she's in Washington, D.C. currently. But I have the honor of presenting these congressional records to Krista tonight and our other members leaving. So, for those of you who don't know, a congressional record is a statement that's officially read into the record of the United States Congress. So, that means five hundred years from now, you can look up your name and you will find it there. So, with that, I would like to read a bit of the record in Congresswoman Speer's words. Mr. Speaker and members, I rise to honor Krista Joy Martinelli as she ends her service as city clerk of the city of South San Francisco. It's unusual to have an attorney as a city clerk, but Krista is unusually committed to helping others. She's leaving public life to again work as an attorney and to advocate for children with special education needs. Using skills honed as a seasoned litigator during her early years out of law school, she will be negotiating and mediating on behalf of children who need representation before school districts. She will be a powerful advocate for parents seeking equal education opportunities for their children. Life tosses us curveballs. In Krista's case, she's excelled in every undertaking. Now, out of dedication to others like Noah, she will begin a new phase, and we will all be better off due to this new way in which she will serve the public's interest. Thank you so much for your years of work.
Before I say a few words, I would just like to thank former councilmember Gupta and our outgoing mayor, Liza Normandy, for the work you've done over the years. It's been my pleasure to serve alongside you, and I wish you both all good fortune in what's to come. Well, it's been a meaningful eleven years. My tenure as city clerk began in two thousand and seven during a time of social progress and economic uncertainty. I watched our talented, dedicated, and hard-working council and city staff navigate lean financial resources against challenging but important state mandates. And when the economy improved, I witnessed this council's commitment to maintaining South San Francisco's welcoming spirit as the fabric of our beautiful city continued to progress. It has been a distinct honor to memorialize this council's thoughtful legislative actions and surrounding discourse in the minutes I've written over the years. During the sunset of my term as elected city clerk, I realized that this weekly exercise of recording our history allowed a unique and constant reflection on the state of our city. Through council changes and two city manager administrations, I have witnessed a city that weathers the course in face of significant change by staying true to the resilience that has always been at the heart of our beloved South City. And as a daughter of this great city, I am beyond fortunate to say that resilience as we know it in South City is the only way I have ever known. I remember passing this very building every day on the way to school with my grandfather, who is here tonight, Chris Ramis, my siblings Tony and Michelle, who are also here, and our very good friend Marty Cole. Before going to work every day, my grandfather would leave his home on Miller Avenue, drive across town to gather us up on Nyla, and drive us back to school at All Souls, also on Miller Avenue. These rides served the functional purpose of helping my parents get to work on time as they supported our family. But for me, they offered the special treat of time to talk local politics with my grandfather. My grandfather has assisted with countless campaigns over the course of his life here in South San Francisco, and he has always had a knack for spotting potential and counseling successful leaders. His secret was and still is insistence on the importance of service dedicated to making people's lives better. After eleven years of witness, I am convinced that the commitment to service instilled by my grandfather's generation has contributed to the resiliency of our city, and will see it through to a vibrant and ever-welcoming future. This commitment is what brought me to the city clerk's office, and is what has propelled me into the next phase of service as a special education attorney. Back in two thousand and seven, I was at a personal crossroads. I had fulfilled my lifelong dream of becoming a mother upon the birth of my beautiful son, Noah, in two thousand and six. Nearly simultaneously, I had achieved the rank of senior associate attorney at Pillsbury Winthrop Shaw Pittman after ten years of litigation practice in federal court. The next step at the firm would have been partnership. Upon the end of maternity leave, I remember looking at Noah's bright six-month-old face and knowing I was done with my legal career as I knew it. Somewhere deep inside, I understood that I was going to need to be present for this child on a level that a law firm lifestyle and the travel it required would not permit. I drove straight to the office with Noah and submitted my resignation. I recall driving out of the parking lot that day, not knowing what I was going to do next professionally, but finding peace in the commitment to being Noah's mom. Re-enter my grandfather, Chris Ramis, with an opportunity for service to community and family. family. He presented the option to fill the vacancy left by the retirement of former city clerk Sylvia Payne. I knew those were big shoes to fill as Sylvia's commitment to South San Francisco's history is unrivaled. My grandfather offered that this opportunity would permit service to our hometown of South San Francisco while having the added benefit of allowing me to be present for my growing family. And of course, his favorite piece was that we would get to run a campaign with lawn signs, speeches, and everything that came along with it. I accepted the challenge and the rest is history. My grandfather's guidance ultimately proved prophetic. Over the course of 11 years as city clerk, my team and I have navigated a tripling of compliance obligations while maintaining transparency and keeping the public informed pursuant to California's Brown Act. With help from our outstanding IT department and Tony Barrera, we rolled out technology, including agenda management and Public Records Act programming that is necessary to keep pace with current local government requirements. It was my honor to assist in bringing these efficiencies to our city, and I am forever thankful for the contributions of my dedicated staff over the years, including Anna Hernandez Brown, Gabriel Rodriguez, Iman Maushur, Carol Quigley, and Sandy Gill. The rapid pace... The rapid pace of change in the clerk's office mirrored my family life. During my term, I met my ever-supportive husband, soulmate, and partner in all things, Greg We are raising our four inspiring children, Noah, Luca, Santino, and Pia, here with a lot of help from family, including my constantly-present and unwavering parents, Mike and Linda My grandparents, Chris and Delia Ramos. My siblings, Michelle and Tony. Their partners, Natalie Martinelli and Patrick Connor, and the extended Martinelli Parini family. There are no words to express to all of you the thanks in my heart for all that you do to support me every day. By far, the most impactful aspect of working close to home was the flexibility it allowed for collaboration with the South San Francisco Unified School District and the outstanding, let's underscore that, Juniper Osara Elementary School regarding my son Noah's educational course through the IEP process under the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA. Together with Noah, we formed and implemented a uniquely tailored, challenging, and inclusive education program that has contributed to his incredible success as an autistic student here in our local schools. My collaborative advocacy on Noah's behalf is inspired by his commitment to learning and his relentless pursuit of his own inclusion, has called me from the clerk's office to focus on founding IEP Collaborative in the very near future. IEP Collaborative will launch with the mission of securing inclusive, challenging education under the idea through collaborative advocacy. As I embark on this next endeavor to serve family and community, I am thankful for what I learned in the clerk's office and the support of our community over the years. Close to my heart are the lessons and service instilled by my mentors, Honorable Joe Furnickes, Barry Nagle, Susan Kennedy, Valerie Sommer, Sharon Reynolds, our councilmembers, and past and current city staff. I am grateful that City Clerk Rosa Acosta has stepped up to assume the role, and I am confident you will do an outstanding job. As I leave office, it is my solemn commitment to be of service to the children and families I will have the privilege of serving and to collaborate with educators around California and the nation for funding and resources to make inclusion possible. Thank you all for allowing my service over the past 11 years and for your commitment to our city by your presence here tonight. South San Francisco truly is the best place I know.
I'd like... Thank you. I'd like to call former Mayor Pradeep Gupta up to the podium. And Mark, would you do the... What's your name? What's your... Would you do the honors? Thank you.
So I wanted to thank Mayor Matsumoto for allowing me the privilege of presenting this commendation to my good friend Pradeep Gupta. You know, Pradeep, throughout your tenure in office, you've demonstrated a grace and an unusual civility that's not often found in the political world, something for me to learn from. It was certainly my pleasure to work closely with you during the most difficult campaign. This was unlike any campaign that I had experienced before, and it was made much more bearable for me by the daily collaboration with you and the spirit you brought to that campaign. The result was not what we hoped for, but I will never forget you or our journey together, and I'm grateful for that. So with that, I'd like to read into the record the commendation. Councilmember Pradeep Gupta, on this December 11th of 2018, whereas Pradeep Gupta was appointed to the South San Francisco City Council for a one-year term on December 31st of 2012, and he was subsequently elected in November 2013 for a full four-year term. And I think we got another year complemented with legislature. So six years in office. Whereas on December 7th of 2016, the South San Francisco City Council recognized at the South San Francisco Municipal Services Building Council chambers and appointed Pradeep Gupta as mayor. Whereas Pradeep Gupta served as Commissioner for the City of South San Francisco Planning Commission from 2009 to 2012, where he served as Chair in 2011. And whereas, in addition to serving as councilmember and mayor to the South San Francisco City Council, Pradeep Gupta held numerous leadership roles, including Board Member for the Association of Barrierate Governments from 2014 to 2018, where he served as Chair of its Regional Planning Committee from 2017 to 2018, Chair of the Economic Development Strategy Group, a Board Member of Peninsula Clean Energy, which has been wildly successful, thanks to your efforts, and Initiator for the Steering Committee on Biotechnology, Workforce, and Education, and Board Member of the City-City Association of Governments Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee. So all the real serious stuff, we gave to Pradeep to cover. Whereas Pradeep Gupta spearheaded the continued growth of biotech initiatives in South San Francisco, such as the Bio International Convention, Oyster Point Project, and several other biotech business attraction expansion efforts. And whereas Pradeep Gupta enhanced the quality of life and spurred economic development for South San Francisco, which led to the groundbreaking of Saris Regis, the Rotary Senior Housing, the South San Francisco Caltrain Station, Genesis Towers, the North Tower, Merck, Gateway of the Pacific, HCP Cove, AC Marriott Hotel, Costco Business, this is some of the stuff we got in trouble for. Anyway, Dunkin' Donuts? Wow. Spruce Cafe and Cafe Bummi, among many others. And whereas, Pradeep Gupta, a first-generation immigrant who came to the United States in 1964, equipped only with an education and lots of ambition, realized his American dream. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of South San Francisco, does hereby commend and heartily thank Dr. Pradeep Gupta on his dedicated service to the City of South San Francisco.
Pradeep, I was so very excited in 2012 when you were appointed to fill my seat on this city council when I was elected to the Assembly. With my departure and your arrival, that seat saw a nice little IQ bump in the positive. Your tenure on the Planning Commission prepared you well for your service on this council. You were always extremely prepared for every meeting you ever attended. That is something that your colleagues, I'm sure, would confirm if given the opportunity. I for one, am deeply grateful for your strong commitment to and advocacy for STEM education, the Science Garage, the Big Lift, and Peninsula Clean Energy, as Councilman Adiego indicated. These are all visionary efforts in this city of innovation, many led by the gentlemen standing here. I wish you, Pradeep, all the best as you accompany kum-kum and start the next chapter in your lives together. And I know that we will hear from Pradeep again in public service in lots of ways. So on behalf of Senators Hill and Weiner and Assemblymember Ting, my colleague from San Francisco, the State of California thanks you and presents you with a resolution acknowledging your six years of outstanding service. Thank you, Pradeep.
Before I call up the next speaker, my profuse apologies to Kevin. Kevin is Speaker Pro Tem of the Assembly, and I am so sorry, I know better. Another staunch advocate of Gupta is Dave Pine.
I feel fortunate to have the opportunity just to say a few words about Pradeep Gupta. You know, I really say without any reservation that he is one of the finest elected officials that we have in the county. You know, he brings to bear just an incredible set of skills. I mean, first, he just cares really deeply about this city and the people he serves. He has an incredibly keen intellect. He can deal with the problem right in front of him, but he also can kind of look out into the future and more broadly. And of course, as we all know, you know, he does bring an incredible civility and kindness in the way he works with people. I've had the chance to work with Pradeep and many of his regional initiatives, including ABAG and the Resource Management Conservation Committee, but in particular, Peninsula Clean Energy. Pradeep has really been one of the most important people in forming and nurturing and growing Peninsula Clean Energy, which has had a remarkable positive effect for our county. Where now, all our residents are enjoying 85% greenhouse gas-free energy at a slightly lower cost than they used to pay, and we're making a real difference in fighting climate change. And it's an incredibly complex world, the world of energy. And to have Pradeep Gupta with his professional skill and the other skills that I mentioned, this is a fan, I'm sure, was incredibly... We were incredibly fortunate, incredibly fortunate. So you know, when we talk about the county, we often say that one out of three of our residents were born outside of this country. So I gotta say that I'm really glad that, you know, a young man from India found his way to South San Francisco.
So I think the Congresswoman would echo a lot of the comments before about Pradeep's graciousness and intelligence in his service. I still would like to read from the congressional record some of the Congresswoman's actual remarks about your time with the city. Councilman Gupta is a scientist at heart and a leader in growing the connections between industry and local schools. He initiated the Steering Committee on Biotechnology, Workforce, and Education. He worked hard with the Genentech Foundation so that a new 7.9 million biotechnology laboratory at South San Francisco High School could be approved and constructed. Today's students in South San Francisco schools come from around the globe. Councilman Gupta is living proof that America thrives when its immigrants have opportunity. Extending this lesson to others and using his position on the council for educational advocacy is a passion of Councilman Gupta. In closing, I want to remark upon the goodwill and grace of Pradeep Gupta. He is my friend, and I've always known him to be passionate, but I've never seen him cross. I've known him to be energetic, but he's always organized. His constituents recognize him as a highly educated, but nonetheless, a man who easily relates to others. In short, he's a quintessential leader of South San Francisco, outgoing, responsive to community needs, and deeply devoted to his family. As he closes his chapter in his life, others will open. In sum, South San Francisco, the industrial city, is a place of generous, loving people vigorously engaged in the enterprise of building the United States of America. Pradeep Gupta will be remembered by his neighbors and friends as a master builder. Thank you so much.
I have given hundreds of speeches, and I thought I'm pretty much away from any emotional nervousness over all this time, but I was wrong. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Matsumoto, and Councilmember Mark Adiego for your comments, Supervisor Dave Pine, Assemblymember Kevin Mullen, and the comments on behalf of Congresswoman Jackie Your commendations were extremely uplifting at this time. But rest assured that I'll be calling upon you shortly for your endorsements for my next public service opportunity. I'll be knocking on your doors. We are now 35 days removed from an incredibly close and tantalizing election. No question that I and 7,838 South San Francisco voters are sad that I lost the election. But hey, we are all one team because we love South City, we love San Mateo County, and we love America. I want to congratulate Mark Adiego, Councilman Mark Nagalas, and Councilwoman Flor Nicholas for their successful campaigns, and wish them the best. Talking of election, I recall one single event while I was doing precinct walking in the area of Sunshine Gardens. I was confronted by a middle-aged, white, American man riding a shiny red Harley Davidson who asked me in a bullying tone, "How would you feel if I went to your country and ran for a public office?" It pained me a lot to hear this comment right here in South City, in the heart of liberal Bay Area, in the year 2018. As I'm leaving the council, I see a huge challenge of harmoniously absorbing new immigrants with old timers, younger generation with older generation, besides ethnicity and gender I'm truly, truly honored to have served you, all of you, as your mayor for one year and a council member for five years. I am so grateful to South San Francisco community for giving me that honor. During that journey, I was helped, I was helped a lot by many, many people. Some of them are here. I want to give a special shout to some of them. I want to first single out Krista's granddad, Chris Tramos, who got me started in year 2013 on how to run a campaign. I want to give a special shout out to my fellow council members, Mark Adiego, Rich Garberino, Carol Matsumoto, Liza Normandy, and also former mayor and council member Pedro Gonzalez, City Clerk Krista Martinelli, and among the county supervisors, Dave Pine and Carol Groom. And I don't see today but great friend of mine, Warren Slocum, who used to go to A-BAG meeting together. Also from the county, my great friend David Canapa. First time I got elected, actually, I was appointed, the very first call I got, the next day was from Supervisor Canapa. And since then, he has been always helping, including walking for my precincts. And Assemblymember and Assembly Pro Tem, leader of the Assembly, Kevin Mullin. Kevin, you have been an inspiration for me for many of my initiatives that I took, they came from you. When you succeeded and you went to Assembly to tackle harder issues for the whole region, you left many of the, your visions with me. I remember I had a talk with you, and we chatted, and I took a lot of notes at that time. And you have never really disappointed me in any way because your ideas and your concepts and visions were just extraordinary, and I'm so happy that you're taking them now with you at a bigger scale at the Assembly and who knows where in the future. State Senators Jerry Hill and Scott Weiner, they have also helped me a great deal. I have been so lucky to be on the regional bodies where I could meet all these illustrious public servants. And their visions, they taught me a lot, they taught me a lot. And let me tell you, many of these successful politicians who we don't know, we always think of politicians in a very narrow, negative light. But I tell you, these people I'm talking about are the best of the humanity who have taken the public service as the main goal of life. They enjoy giving rather than taking, and we got to be thankful for all of them being And I don't want to leave at all Congresswoman Jackie Spear. Whenever I met her, I always found that spark in her that would activate my energies to do the next best thing. I also found a lot of friends in the labor movements for working families. Labor, I really wish you the best because you are needed at this time, and we need to be with you and support you. And on top of that, I met so many council members from other cities of the county and outside the counties in my regional bodies. It's hard to, if I keep on talking about the names, there are so many names, but these people in other cities understand what is needed, understand what is needed by the region. They are good people, they bring a lot of talent to the county and to other governments. And I really want to encourage this intercity cooperation, collaboration, and thinking as a body, not against each other, not trying to divvy up the pie, but look at it as to increase the size of the pie. And I don't want to leave the best, and that is the staff, staff of South San Francisco. We have excellent, excellent staff headed by our city manager, Mike Futrell, and our great fire and police departments, and extremely dedicated department directors. I'm so grateful to have had a chance to work with this great team of all those years which made my tasks so much easier. Thank you very much.[1042.01][1042.01](APPLAUSE). And I would be remiss if I did not include in my thanking list my companion, my campaign She's the one who sacrificed a lot in the last six years.
She did, thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, my friend and former mayor, Liza Normandy.[1141.65][1141.65](APPLAUSE). This one next to me is noted for, this is, we apologize, there's so many good people, and we wanted to recognize their accomplishments and bid farewell, but this one next to me is noted for her hard stops, "We gotta do this," she hates long meetings, so I'm gonna do this to her.[1182.33][1182.33](LAUGH) Her resolution is, I have her four pages worth, so I'm, I'm gonna take the good stuff.
I have no control.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just gonna give you the basics, okay? Liza was elected to South San Francisco City Council November 2013, making history as the second Asian-American woman elected to the city council, and only the third woman to serve on the city council in over 100 years. She was anointed on December 5th as our, right here, as the mayor. Prior to her service on city council, she served as a school board trustee from 2006 to 2013, and served as president both in 2008 and '10. She has, she has served since then on numerous regional bodies. During Liza's term as mayor, she was instrumental in major progress towards the design and planning of what we hope will someday, and will come to fruition, our civic camp, our community campus. And so, although she didn't like the design, she supported the project. Liza was also instrumental in helping to launch San Francisco State University's mid-career biotech MBA program in downtown South San Francisco, the first time in the city's history that graduate-level courses have been offered within our city limits. Liza continues to be a tireless advocate for gender equality in the workplace, and among her many initiatives in this area has been the Women's Networking Forum and the well-received Women in Biotech Panel at the International Biotech Convention. She wowed them, that was just phenomenal, we almost had standing room only. All right. Liza also used her influence in community relationships to help raise funding for important programs such as South San Francisco Police Department's Explorers Post, the Fire Department's Community Emergency Team, known as CERT, the South San Francisco Boys and Girls Club, and South San Francisco Fog Baseball Team, and the Police Athletic League boosters. She, with her council-approved funding for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. In 2015, Liza Normandy supported Measure W, a half-cent sales tax initiative to provide additional funding mostly highly designed for our residents, including public safety, 911 emergency response, crime, and gang suppression programs. She has, it is with, it is with really heartfelt gratitude and most sincere appreciation and respect to Liza, a truly caring, dedicated, and passionate individual who has made a positive difference in the residents' lives of South San Francisco. We wish her only the best and thank her for her 12 years of public service to South San Francisco.[1384.47][1384.47](APPLAUSE). We can catch up with this later, we'll put two folders later, because I'd like to call up Speaker Pro Tem, Kevin Mullin.
So, with Roberta here, do we have all the women, past and present, who've served on the city council in the same room?
Yes.
That's a photo op, and that's a photo for the Historical Society wall and beyond. So, let me just say, Liza, your interest in elective office began as a participant, as I understand it, in the city's first citizens academy. On the first night, Susan Kennedy shared this with me, on the first night when participants were introducing themselves, you simply told everyone that you wanted to learn more about how the city functioned so you could run for elected office. That vision was clear from the get-go. Next thing you know, you were elected to the school board in November of 2006, and then to the city council in 2013. You have now chosen to continue your service to the community through your important role as the chamber CEO. We are all deeply grateful for your service as an elected official, and best wishes for a successful tenure with the chamber, and to further acknowledge your fruitful tenure a legislative resolution on behalf of the California Senate and Assembly. Thank you so much, Liza.[1484.08][1484.08](APPLAUSE).
You know, Liza Normandy is one of those people that is always looking for a way to contribute to her community, and she has done that for so many years, long before she became an elected official. I know you were so active in your PTA council and various organizations around town, and every, every community needs a couple Liza Normandys that will just make things happen. I'm fortunate to have first met Liza as when she joined the school board, when I was a school board member, and you've been a, you've paved the way to being the first Asian-American on that board, and as has been mentioned here, the third woman on the South City Board. And very excited, and we're all thrilled about you leading the Chamber of Commerce. In many ways, Chamber of Commerce is, you know, is another just foundation of a community, and we're lucky you're doing that job. So, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, my colleague Supervisor Canapa, happy to present to you this, this resolution.
Thank you so much.[1576.15][1576.15](APPLAUSE). Sarah?
Getting too nervous running on a person-based email. I'll try to be efficient as well, but Mayor Normandy, it was a pleasure to work with you this past year at our Academy Night, it was an honor, and I'll cut to the chase. And on behalf of Congresswoman Jackie Spear, I'd like to say, you know, Mr. Speaker, I rise to honor Liza Normandy for five years of service on the South San Francisco City Council, including this year as mayor. Mayor Normandy has been a strong advocate for affordable housing, solutions to the gridlock on our roads, infrastructure upgrades, youth and senior programs, and fiscal responsibility. For the last two years, she spearheaded the South San Francisco Women's Networking Forum, a series of evening forums designed to motivate women to get involved in local government. During the same period, Liza became an ordained minister and officiated seven weddings, so you've been very busy. Liza departs from the council to pursue her current position as CEO of the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce, which will allow her to stay actively involved in our community, thankfully. Her goal to improve the quality of life for all residents of South City hasn't changed, and we will continue to benefit from her leadership and engagement. Mr. Speaker, I ask the members of the House of Representatives and this audience to join me in thanking Liza Normandy for 12 years of public service to South San Francisco. I commend her for her contributions and wish her well in her future endeavors.
Good evening. First, allow me to offer my congratulations and welcome to City Councilwoman Flora Nicholas, City Councilmember Mark Nagalas, Councilmember Mark Adiego, City Clerk Rosa Costa, City Treasurer Frank Rizzo, and to say thank you to now our former, but ever forever and honorable Krista Martinelli and Pradeep Gupta for their years of service in our city. We have a round of applause for them, please.[1746.35][1746.35](APPLAUSE). Life for me is about reflections. As I reflect on the past years as your mayor, I reminded that the greatest gift of my life, and why I reflect often, is with my children. Thomas and Ariel tonight is dedicated to you both. You have been patient these past years as I served our community, our home. Thank you for being you, thank you for being strong and resilient, we have been through a lot. For the past 12 years, excuse me, I purposely left tissue up here, hoping I wasn't gonna use it. For the past 12 years, I've had the honor and privilege of serving the residents of South San Francisco as an elected official, and the past five years as a member of the city council. Tonight, I wish to thank them and all of you. Whether it's serving in a political... Whether it's serving in a political position by running for office, serving in the Peace Corps, serving as a firefighter, policeman or woman, or serving in the military, I have learned in my many years of public service that every person has a different reason for why they serve. Most people don't serve because of thank yous. They're nice and rewarding, but that's not what gets us up in the morning. It's all in the little things on a daily basis that I see and I get to be a part of that has motivated me to spend the best part of my career in the public eye. The job of the mayor is a personal one, as it should be for anyone who serves on city council. In that, the responsibility for you, your children's safety, at home, at work, on the streets, for our neighborhoods to be safe, our city growing in fiscal strength, the inspiration of arts and playgrounds that are accessible to all, the growth of our city, and so much more. I've had the opportunity to hear from you, your letters, your emails, your phone calls, your three minutes at a city council meeting, meetings in our office, nationalized out, and numerous events that I have also shared with you. In the process, a wonderful thing happened to me. Through those thousands of ways of communicating, I had the opportunity to get to know you, and that has been a priceless treasure. It has inspired me to work harder, to do more, to do it better, and to never give up making our city safer and more livable. These achievements were accomplished together. There has been some events and meetings that were controversial, but through it all, it has kept me, it's kept us going, pushing us not to give up. And I knew that if the goal was achieved, the project, the initiative, the action of our agenda is completed, your faith in us would be fulfilled. I am proud to serve as your mayor and a member of the city council. I've had the front row seat on so many beautiful acts of goodness and service to celebrate community. Tonight is a night, our moment to reflect. And all the achievements were not mine, rather, they were yours and the 67,000-plus residents, our hard-working city employees, with whom I've had the privilege to work with on city council, as I accomplish nothing alone. Rather, I'd like to conclude with these thoughts for our city and its future. First, we must be always be, first, we must always be guided by the standard of excellence. That is, we have the responsibility to seek excellence in everything we do with professionalism. I request that you remind those sitting behind me what they campaigned for, why you voted for them. Allow those bullet points on the campaign literature to serve as their commitment, their promise, their excellence to fight for the city we all call home. I ask you as residents to get to know those behind me and ask questions. Send them an email, allow them to answer, to respond. Those behind me are the leaders that you elected. These are the leaders that will continue to make decisions on your behalf. I ask you to be part of their decisions, and remember, it takes a majority to affect change. In closing, even though my time in office and serving you is over, the memories will never leave me. I was walking down the inside steps of City Hall the other day, and as I looked up on the walls and stared at all the headshots of our former mayors, I said to myself, through all that we have been through, through all the hard work and sacrifices, I made it. And I hope I made you, the residents, my children, my family, proud. Thank you for sharing my journey. Thank you for your support. Your confidence in me has made my dream of community service come true, and I am overwhelmed with gratitude to finish my final term as your mayor. Thank you and good night.
Incoming mayor's remarks and special ceremony.
Okay, this is it, folks. What I want to do is, I hope you had noticed is that this is the Year of the Woman. I believe strongly in that. In tonight's ceremony, we had a young lady give us, lead us in, well, first, it was, it was the Honor Guard. And I asked Chief Asapadi if I could have women, and he provided us with two explorers, who are young ladies. And then Maddie, I have to tell you, I told you about DK. Now I have to tell you about Maddie. Maddie Popolak is a fifth-grade student at Martin School in South San Francisco. When Maddie and her classmates were studying Black History Month, they learned that Ruby Bridges was one of the first African-Americans to go to an all-white school in New Orleans in November 14, 1960. They and their teacher, Mrs. Carlino, decided to create a Ruby Bridges Day at their school. They then proceeded to go before the South San Francisco Unified School District Board and the San Mateo County Offices and Education. Both of these bodies voted to adopt Ruby Bridges Day. So this is, Liza does programs. I like mentoring it. This is, you know, and Roberta can appreciate it because we talk about this. We're gonna, we start at grammar school and we mentor and we bring them along. So it won't take people, it won't take South San Francisco 110 years to have four women serving on city council. So, and before I, I will be briefing my other comments. I wanted to recognize some of our electives. We have Patrick Lucy from the South San Francisco Unified School District, Eddie Flores, newly elected to the South San Francisco Unified School District, Shelley Mazur, councilwoman from the city of Redwood City, and Jeff Chi, a councilwoman of, from Redwood City. Oh, and Maurice Skuman, who's on the College of San Mateo. Yeah, he was mentioned. Yeah, we did get Virginia Chankarali. Did we get, well, you got Virginia Chankarali. Okay, now we've done, did we forget anyone? Oh, Emily Beach, city of Burlingame. Thank you for coming and my fellow TA member. Anyone else? I mean, it's important because all of them have busy schedules and they're running back and forth to all these things. So we appreciate your taking the time to come here. What I did, this is important to me, so, and it was mentioned earlier. There's one person here who I wish could be here, and that's Alice Bullos. I worked with, I worked with Alice for over 15, between 15 and 20 years. I first met her when I worked for Senator Kopp and then Supervisor Anna Eschew. And Alice's goal was for political empowerment for Filipino-Americans. And that woman gave it her all. I know because she dragged me along all the time. I was, I was, I was her, one of her chauffeurs. I started a club called Driving Miss Alice. And she was everywhere. In my job with Senator Kopp and Supervisor, then, now Congresswoman Eschew, but then Supervisor Eschew, we worked, we worked towards looking to appoint Filipino-Americans to office and boards and commissions. She was a graduate, I was on advisory council for the Tomasian group she had. She worked in Daly City. She worked across the bay. We would have conversations at 11 o'clock at night after she worked a very, very full day. I mean, I was only a staffer. I was not an elected. But I truly, truly wish she could be here this evening to see that her work paid off. I mean, we worked with Congresswoman Spears at a time when she was trying to get the rights for the Filipinos who fought, you know, during the war and going for their benefits. I mean, she was everywhere. And she was a resident of Westboro District, where we're from. But anyway, I do wish, I do wish she could be here. So also, just, we're supposed to line up our goals and everything. So I've listed, city manager and I have gone back and forth because sometimes we don't have the same goals, but basically, we're kind of in sync. And my four goals, my four goals, and later on, when we have our council retreat, all council members will chime in. But tonight, I'm saying, my goals in order their priority is to update our general plan. I want you to know that this city, I came in one year after, I was elected one year after, hit the ground. But I want you to know that the success of this city and the biotech campus and everything else was predicated over the 20 years with this general plan. And the council members at that time that I sat with were Joe Fernikis, Jim Mullen, Gene Mullen, Jim Dotzman, and John Penna. But that was the footprint that got us to where we are today. So hopefully, this council, when we get the general plan for the next 20 years, will lead us into another century. My other, my other goal, unfortunately, but wisely, is I would like to see a recession plan. We all know it's coming. I would like to have us be ahead of the game and plan for the future because one of my goals, and which happened last time in 2008, we did not lay off any employee with this city. Other employees had to work harder, but we were able to maintain and get things done. Some of your roads, the potholes weren't fixed. Some of the grounds were not kept up. But we managed to, quote, soldier on. My third is affordable housing. We all know that that's so important, and I am a big advocate, and so is this gentleman sitting next to me. And I'm, and I think most of, all of the council were into affordable housing. And the last, of course, is transportation. We'll get there. So with that, which has been council, which has been for me a Japanese tradition. This is, this is the third time I've done it, and this is the sake ceremony. And Councilman Adiego said to me, are you gonna do that again, Carol? So we are having this sake ceremony, and because I'm, oh, I forgot to ask. It's a celebration. It's not done all the time. It's a special celebration. It's, the sake's been purified or, I'm Japanese by birth only, you know? Am I saying this right? Well, we have, the council general couldn't, couldn't, had an emergency. So we have tonight Vice Council Roy Aono, and he is going to join council with the sake ceremony. And you can tell me what we're supposed to do. So we're gonna do the ceremony. There'll be sake in the back. And then do not leave without, there is a banquet in the back. It's probably cold, but there is a banquet and libation, as former Senator Kopp used to say, potables and comestibles. Let's go, gang. Liza? You have to come here and lead, do the toast. If you would be so kind as to do a toast.
So ladies and gentlemen, as our newly councilman, our council for 2019 is going to drink their first toast of sake. Our staff also is in the back with little cups for you to also celebrate with us to assess of a very achievement of 2019. Looking forward to work with the council on a different level. Congratulations.
There being no further business to come before the council, the meeting is adjourned, and bon appétit.